...ready for this county and we ask that decisions that we make please you and honor you in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. This time we do a roll call.
Commissioner Webster?
Here.
Commissioner Holthausen?
Here.
Commissioner McMaster?
Here.
Commissioner Garber?
Here.
Commissioner Marks?
Here.
Commissioner Paulman?
Here.
Chairman Root?
Here.
All right, all the members are present. At this time I'd like to take a minute at the beginning of the meeting here to announce that our longtime county treasurer Tom Dwyer is going to retire at the end of this month. Over twenty-two years of service to this county, Tom was in his sixth term of service as treasurer, and although there's been some controversy here lately in the last year or two, we don't want that to diminish or tarnish his over two decades of, you know, loyal, respected service to the people of Chiwasi County. And that's all I'll say, we're mad at him. We'll go right into approval of the minutes at this time. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion in support. Mr. Paulman supported the motion. Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying, that motion is approved. This time we'll move to approval of the bills. Mr. Paulman, your word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the invoice edit reports dated seven eighteen, two thousand nineteen, seven eighteen, seven twenty-three, seven twenty-four, eight one, eight one, eight eight, eight eight of two thousand nineteen, which totaled four million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-seven cents. I also move to approve wire transfers, ACH or EFTs, from eight nine, two thousand nineteen, eight one, eight one, two thousand nineteen. The grand total of both, four million, seven hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents, which includes both batched wire, and to authorize the warrants be drawn from the treasury for savings.
As we were in motion to pay the bills, support Commissioner Holthausen. Do we have a discussion on the bills at this time?
I just wanted to make a comment that I know I've been asking for a financial statement, a financial packet. Tracy has been working very hard and I am so grateful. I understand this is complicated, but I know that other wards of commissioners have this in front of them when they make decisions. I'm going to probably vote no again today, just because we're still working on getting clarity, but I just wanted to say I really appreciate Tracy. She's doing an amazing job. And as we have talked about with any other wards this week, it's important that we have a clear financial picture when we make spending decisions. And I understand this is a philosophical no that I'm voting, but I'm voting no just until we have a clearer picture.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything else? Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I would certainly like to echo Commissioner Webster's sentiment now in Tracy's amazing ability to get up to speed very quickly. My thought in voting no and paying the bills is that we have county employees that are counting on that paycheck. These checks have already been sent and spent, so by the time we get them, we're not really approving.
If we were, boss.
No, it's my comment.
All right. We're done. We're done. We won on the vote now. Roll call.
Commissioner Holthausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulman?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
No.
Chairman Root?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This time we will move to the first opportunity of the public to address the board. Three minutes, please, for speaker. We do have some sheets already filled out. If anyone else would like to speak, please feel free to fill out one of these and hand it in to the clerk. First, we have Mike, Michael McComb from Mossow, Michigan. His topic is the Bennington Township zoning and disagree. Your word is yours, sir.
Are we doing the date? We've been over this quite a few times with the zoning for Jason here with the transport I clearly understand where everybody's going, that votes yes to have business come into the area. I understand it, I get it, I welcome it. Just not that area. It's all residential, it's small, it's acre and a half, everything else is residential, it's tight. I got the vacant land next to them. You got my house, people across the street, traffic, highway, everybody talks about a master plan. I've never seen a master plan. Nobody's ever presented a master plan to anybody. I don't understand it. But when you go to the zoning board for the, or Bennington Township, they have laws to protect people, to protect businesses. They're not protecting me by any means. I've already went in front of Bennington Township, Chiwasi County. Nobody would give me even a chance to sit there to build a pole barn or combine the lots together so I could have that. Tried three times, got turned down three times. I don't see how he can sit there to build a cold storage, pole barn, cold storage, same thing. To me, that feels like I've been discriminated against. And from the legal attorneys that I've talked to, they say the same thing. I'm getting frustrated. I don't even see how it got this far. And everybody keeps on talking about a master plan? I wish somebody would show me the master plan. Because I think it's farce. If you've got guidelines in one area and nothing on the other side, but they just want to keep on building big business, it's not the right area. They should go down an industrialized area. I mean, shoot. He's already asked if he can purchase my extra property. No, no one to sell. You know, I've even given an option to even build because somebody knows somebody. I don't see how that could happen. If I sat here and already went in front of the board when they told me no, I'm mad, upset. And I don't care about other areas that already had businesses in that area. We don't need another one. It's a small acreage, it's not a large parcel. It's small. You can't expand. I'm not going to give up my land to no one.
This time we will move on to Bill Newman, rezoning Bennington Township.
I'm disagreeing. And I'm right with him. I disagree highly with what's going on. This shouldn't have reached this far. I want to know with all this, how many things are we giving up and allowing him to readjust? Out of all the stuff what I would have to do if I wanted to do something, my property, every time I check, oh, you got to follow this rule, this rule, this rule. Now all of a sudden, we're just bending over and say, here, you can have this and this because he's a business. And it's too small. He's going to grow this in one or two years probably. He could have already had a building up at this rate if he'd have went right into Perry and bought into the zoning area there where it's already commercial. Yeah, it's going to cost him more, but if this is such a hurry for him, why couldn't he just go in there? And he'd have a building up at this point. And there's probably eighty boats or more. I want to know, a building supposedly, the paper has it, is four thousand. My understanding is it's more like thirty thousand square footage of this building. Now, if they're supposedly a hundred and twenty-five feet off the center of the road back in, I don't know exactly what the frontage is off of Terrell Road, what it's got to be, and there's at least twelve feet the rest of the way around in the north and west side of it. Power lines running over it, how many rules do we have to change to fit his criteria? And this building, if it's that big and he wants to put an overhead crane in, you're talking twenty feet here at least, I would think. Now that is going to show no matter what type of trees he leaves up there, which he's already got it all marked out and mowed now, which he can have done. But it sounds to me like this, from get-go, has felt to me, the way we've been represented is like, we don't mean anything. We're here, you're listening to us, but you've made up your mind before anything was ever done. Because this had to be started a good month or better before we ever heard anything about it. And I'm telling you, if I would have known about it early enough, I'd have been doing some checking, I would have had a lawyer here and the rest of us would have done. They wanted transparency up front, why didn't we get paperwork that shows how big this building is? What variances are we allowing him to have, to have that business in there? That's all I've got.
Thank you. Jason Gardner, rezoning.
Hi, I'm Jason Gardner. I am the owner of Custom Transporters, the one that's looking to do the cold storage. A few things that I would like to point out. One, on our Monday night meeting, we did hand out kind of the site plan. The garage is ninety-eight by forty is what we're looking at, which is four thou, little under four thousand square feet. I understand that traffic is a big concern about coming off of Tyrell Road. Whenever we pull out of Crest Marine, we're pulling onto Delaney Road and then turning onto M-52. So from a dead stop, we're turning onto M-52 to begin with, so it's not really a whole lot of difference for us. As far as my drivers go, we've not had any accidents pulling out. We've been hauling for Crest for over four years now. None of my drivers have been in any accidents here in Michigan as far as pulling out onto M-52. As far as the building goes, I'd like to reiterate the fact that the building is more designed for the end of the month. All of our loading is going to be done at Crest during business hours during the week, all the way to the end of the month. The end of the month is the only time that Crest has to get their boats off the lot to be considered shipped. So, prime example, if they have two boats that are getting finished the last week of the month, and they have two boats, another two boats on the load that are going to complete the first week of the month, we would shuffle the first two boats down to the yard, and then at the end of the month, they consider those shipped. The next week, we'd be able to shuffle the other two to complete the load, which we would be loading there at the yard on Tyrell. So, this isn't something that, there's going to be permanent employees there all the time. This is more for the end of the month, just to shuffle boats off the lot. The rest of the time, the property will be vacant for almost the entire month. For what it's worth, in the first, one of the first meetings that I went to with the Bennington Township, they did approve it on a special use permit, but there was no special use permit. Then after the second meeting is when they denied it since there was no special use permit for that. And as far as the building goes, you know, I am looking at a twenty-foot tall building to be able to put an overhead crane inside. The overhead crane's going to help us to be able to stack boats inside the building so that we're not going to be storing things outside. Because as we've mentioned before, in the, in the previous meetings about, you know, having eyes on things, theft and that situation, I'm trying to keep everything inside so that I don't have to worry about eyes on. The building is actually going to be facing to the west, so even the garage door, everything will be to the west. So when you're going down M-52, the only thing you'll see is the back of my building. Still planning on leaving all the trees up as a buffering zone, just to keep eyes off of. But this is not going to be like a salvage yard where anything's going to be an eyesore to anybody driving down the road. That's the plan of keeping everything inside, keeping it secure and trying to keep it as beautiful as we can anyways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This time we'll move Danny Miller, MERS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Danny Miller. If you see me squinting at you, I am not winking, I need new glasses. My comments today are in reference to MERS. My comment also, today's in reference to a comment made in the Argus Press on thirteen August, and it was made by you Cindy. And again, I'm not, I'm not a yell or a scream or a shout. I just want to try and set something straight. Your comment, I served on the nine eleven board for ten years. I served on the finance committee. And from everything I looked at, and I looked at some of my old notes, I threw a lot of them away because I haven't been on that board for quite some time. But for, the comment was for us to maybe take some of this responsibility. First of all, I served under the first director, Lieutenant Mike Ass, the second, Barbara Payne, and the third, Pam Battencock. And every one of those budgets, and there are people sitting at this table in this room now that also represented this Board of Commissioners that sat at that same table. And when we did the budget, all members were assured in that budget that our people were taken care of. And one of the things when we went, and what I mean by taken care of, all members of MERS, all members of the nine-one-one board was having their retirement taken out properly. We were assured that, and I'll tell you why again to the word "assured." I definitely understood this, and there's a gentleman sitting behind me, and I think he understood this. When we went with the two point six five surcharge, which we spent probably eighteen months to two years, looking at that, how to come up with it, and then also implementing that into a millage and having a successful millage on it. Nine eleven is connected to the sheriff's department only in that the sheriff himself or herself could appoint Mr. Lieutenant Mize, Lieutenant Payne, or Lieutenant Battencock. They had that ability. Well, what comes then is that that, find that budget in the finance committee, we did the budget, we sent the budget over to the Board of Commissioners. Here are some of the key factors that people need to know when it comes to the nine eleven board. Any money, and this is law, any money that comes into the nine eleven board can only be used by the nine eleven people to cover their, when we bought the new building, when we set it up, and we did the other things. So the finance committee did the budgets, but there are some keys here. We never saw the budget after it came to the Board of Commissioners. I never saw one. We were never given a bill. I don't remember us giving any checks. And I served on that committee, and that finance committee, and these things I do not remember, and I have a pretty good memory. Control of the budget was completely and is completely within the parameters of the Board of Commissioners. That is in the bylaws, that is in the rules and bylaws of that when we set it up. So, I'm, I'm stating close, thank you sir. If you, yeah, because my comments for the second part, and if you give me one extra minute, I'll tell you why, but I'm really close, thank you sir. So, I don't believe any of us ever saw that, so the, that's what I was getting to Cindy, I'm not jumping you. I'm not, I don't come yelling and screaming at people. I want to set some things straight, hopefully I am. So the complete, the control is completely within this board. You people control the nine eleven. We control what we can do there, but we have to come back, that's why one of you sat on that board. When we set up the plan, Deb Doyle then ran, she was elected, and Debbie was a chair. Charlie Keenan is a citizen at large. Kyle Box represented Perry. The gentleman sitting right behind me, he represented?
EMS.
EMS. I represented a township at large, and there was one board member. So I haven't been to a nine eleven board meeting in some time. How many board members? Who's the chair of the board now? You are.
Chair of what board?
Nine eleven.
Guy. You're the chair.
Okay. How many board members here sat on that board? Two. The plan set up called for one. Okay, I'll let it go at that. That's what I wanted to establish today. This plan was established and built, built in this way. We didn't know, and you guys, and this board evidently didn't know either, but I also see on your agenda, but I wanted to clear this up, okay? Give me one more minute, and I won't speak at the second half. I came also to tonight's meeting to make some remarks concerning a friend, not an old friend, and that is Tom, Mr. Tom Dwyer. I wasn't real happy with how the situation was going with Tom, and I thought the best thing was, and I don't know if you tried it, so I'm just giving you an opinion, get a hold of Mr. Dwyer and offer him either an open or a closed meeting, and that's the way it should have been done. But I understand now it's been taken care of, so we'll let it go at that, and I was, that was going to be some of my second comments. Thank you. Thank you, people.
Thank you. Our next one will be Angela Orling, nine one one director, surcharge and budget.
Thank you. Chairman, I've got a few things for you to do, if I can pass them out, would you please?
Angela, because people aren't watching the future tomorrow.
Sure.
I wanted to come speak with you today because throughout the week, I've also been watching the commissioners' meetings, and I felt like there was a lot of questions. So I could come here today to help clarify some things, reference our surcharge, and any other questions maybe that you would have later on. So I'm going to try and make this as quick as I can. The first page that I gave you was a printout from the state of Michigan. It shows every, every nine-one-one center in the state of Michigan, and the fourth column over says county charge. It shows what the nine-one-one surcharge is per county in this state. I did want, I do want it to be known that the highest allowed by the state of Michigan is three dollars that we can charge per cell phone, per landline, whatever the access to the phone may be. But I just wanted to give you some comparisons to show you that we are not too far off base with what we are charging our citizens here. If you look on, so third page, it shows the population for the counties that are in the area of Chiwasi, or roughly the same population as Chiwasi County. So what I wanted to do is show you Clinton County, neighboring county, their population is seventy-nine thousand, which is roughly close to what Chiwasi County has. We have roughly around sixty-eight, sixty-nine thousand. They're charging two seventy-five per full time, which is ten cents more than what we are charging. Genesee County, which is also a neighboring county, obviously they're a lot larger county, their population is four hundred and six thousand. And since everyone, almost everyone does carry a cell phone, it makes sense to say that they're collecting far more surcharge revenue than a smaller county like us. They're currently charging a dollar eighty-six. Isabella County, which is, their population is seventy thousand, which is really close to what our population is here, they charge three dollars to their citizens, and they also have a millage that they collect six million dollars off of every year. And there's a few other, Saginaw County, neighboring county, they charge two sixty-five, and they also have a six million dollar millage. Bamburan recently, they went to request a millage, but it was voted down, so I'm assuming that they will also be going to their citizens and trying to increase their surcharge as well, because it's clear that they don't have the funds either to pay for all the other grades the next gen nine-one-one is requesting. So I just wanted to kind of go over that, and hopefully that clarifies that a little bit. I don't think we're too far off. If anything, I think we're on the lower end of most counties our size. And I wanted to show you a trial balance report for April of two thousand eighteen. This is when I was promoted to the nine-one-one director of Chiwasi County. And if you look about halfway down the page, I have circled what our revenue was as of April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. It was one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And if you go down to the bottom of the page, it shows that our expenditures were seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. So being a new director, that was very alarming to me. And this is where I started saving money, because I did not know what the future held at that time. I didn't know what was going to happen with MERS, I didn't know what my budget was. So if you go to present day, it's showing our fund balance of one point two nine. And our expenditure so far this year has been eight hundred and one thousand dollars. I also want to point out that there was a cash investment account that I did not know that we had when I first took office, or prior lieutenant was not aware of that either. I didn't find that money until I had access to BSNA and found it myself. I just wanted to point out a few of these things. I, I do have plans for the money. I've been saving it for a reason. I want to put it back into our community and to our first responders. I want to do a radio project to improve communications, and for officer safety reasons as well. Our CAD system was bought out by another company, they've combined, and we're being told eventually that they are no longer going to support our software, so that's going to force our hand to buy a new CAD system. All these projects are multimillion dollar projects, and I'm trying to save what I can to move us forward. And that's all I have. I'm Mr. Brown, so if you have questions later, you might have to answer them, so.
Mr. Brown, ask your question. You have a question earlier? Where? This time we will move to John Lawn, Land? Law?
Yes.
Word is yours on rezoning.
Yes, I live on Terrell Road, and so I'm here to talk about the planned rezoning of a piece of property at the corner of Terrell and Fifty-Two. There's been other people tried to buy that, came here, tried to get it rezoned, so that they could buy it, you wouldn't allow it. There's three pieces of property, or leased pieces of property within a hundred and fifty feet of the manufacturing facility that are for lease today. Why do you need to rezone something for this company, individual, whatever, whatever it is, and, which is about four or five miles away from the manufacturing facility, when there's land for lease a hundred and fifty feet from the manufacturing facility, and change it from agricultural and R1, which it is now, and it has been for, who knows how long? I have no idea. I've been out there for twenty-five years, and it's always been agricultural. And now you want to make it light industrial. It's not fair to the people that moved in out there that thought it was going to be agricultural and, and, and R1. Bought out there, with, with that in mind, our Bennington Township people voted to not allow this, and I believe that you should go along with the township, but township are, are involved with our people. It's, it's not, it's, it's just not right when, like I said, within a hundred and fifty feet of that manufacturing facility, there's a sign for lease. It's fenced in already, it has a building on it already. This is what this person is proposing to do. It's, it's just not right that you would take our agricultural area and make it light industrial. It's, it's, it's not what we bought out there for, it's not what we came there for, it's not what the people of the township wanted. If the people of the township would want it, we would have voted against it at the township level. You should not go against the residents of that area and the township board. That's my say.
Does anyone else at this time have anything, the first call to the public? If not, there'll be a second opportunity. There's a second opportunity at the end of the meeting, yes. If not, we'll move into our committee reports. Director, Commissioner Webster?
I don't have anything to really report, just continuing to attend the SCOWA and V-A triple A meetings, and serving on a committee now with V-A, and moving forward with the Community Persons Advisory Board to try to pull that back together, so.
Thank you. Commissioner McMaster?
Nothing's really changed since our last meeting, I've had an West Trail Authority meeting, GST meetings canceled, Water Trail Coalition meeting, nothing new there. That's more related towards, we already know about the Chi-Town dam, and that's more of parks and racetrack in our county. Other meetings I attend, Attorney Commission, clearly we're in the middle of that right now. Other meetings I attend, the nine-one-one board, we're in the middle of that. So I guess there's not anything new, I think, to the board that I've wanted to... So I guess there's not anything new, I think, to the board that everyone isn't already aware of, that isn't already on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. Commissioner Marks, anything to add?
I see nothing new there.
Commissioner Harrow?
No, I don't have anything to report.
Commissioner Oldshausen?
Yes, I guess I'm on the 911 committee, but I'm new on it, so I don't know all the details and what went on. It's kind of new to me. So, I'm on the Chiwasi County Senior Citizens Board and things are going on there. We had a director over here wanting to raise a millage a little bit, but we haven't got the numbers on that to check that. And I'm also on the Chiwasi Economic Board and things are going on over there. I'm on the Metal Health Board and a couple subcommittees there. And things are moving on over there. Finances, they always need more money for disability and handicap people. Things are moving.
I have a few things. I'd like, our county's Michigan Township Association Group will start a meeting next, next month in September, I believe it's the first Tuesday to the second. The Parks Board met last night, Parks and Rec Board. I'd just like to say that the dam is out at Chi-town, so if you get a chance, you might want to drive by. Also, an awful lot of the grading and sculpturing of that area is being completed at this time. There's a few things we're gonna work on during the fall. That park is really starting to take a different shape and a different look. If you get a chance, you might want to take a look at it. Road Commission, our Road Commission stuff, they did a lot of blacktopping. They put the last of the chip seal on the new blacktopping. And now they're getting ready to what they call put a fog seal on top of the chipstone, which seals the chipstone and the blacktop together for sealer. They purchased salt for the winter, 13 tons early purchase. And then later on, they have an agreement, if they need it late, it'll be 500 tons. The second round of moing for blacktop, street, blacktop roads, all activity is going along pretty good, maybe you've noticed. Lines were painted on last year's work, the new roads and chipstone and sealer last year. Those painted lines were done this year. The new roads that were done this year are blacktopped. They will be painted lines next year. Anything here, anything else really? No, not on that. And then, that's up.
Does any other commissioner have anything to report for the board at this time? No, we'll move into our Economic Development Report, Commissioner McMaster?
Senator Commissioner Chair, item A, I'm going to adopt ordinance number 19-08-02 to men Chiwasi County zoning map. Property located in section 33 Bennington Township, parcel ID number 010-33-200-003-04 from A2 Agricultural Product and Rural Residential. The M1 Light Industrial, I'm going to ask the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Got a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second?
We have a second to the motion. This motion is now up for discussion. Commissioner Oldshausen?
Yeah, I understand that Jake was concerned about the lot out there is small. It sounds like everything's going to be done inside, so there's not really anything critical. It wasn't in the master plan. We have several projects in the master plan that came up, a wheeler trucking a couple years ago. Forty acres of farmland is going to be industrial, light industrial. And they're gonna do, they're gonna do lots of trucks going in and out of that, dozens and dozens, because he's in a trucking business, so all the trucks. We got another small project over on 52, made in town and check, that was residential. And the guy wants to do cabinet work and some lumber work and stuff like that, so we're gonna have to build it up on 52. And so, the plan changes and probably gonna have several customers going in and out, but I don't think it's gonna be a real bad situation. So, the master plan is not always true, but we've changed a lot. There's several other ones that opened too, I mentioned.
I have a couple items. This addresses this item, some comments that have been made. One, the master plan is always available to the public, it's located upstairs, it lives on the third floor, in the community belt and office. Yes, there is a new master plan that's being created. And there's gonna be more of this, there's gonna be more businesses that, more plots of land, there's gonna be zone commercial for businesses all up and down our state truck lines, especially ones located within a couple miles of our interstate, which is an international trade corridor. Three, I understand Bennington Township has a master plan and I know they have a planning commission, but in all reality, that's a suggestion. It's not, it really has no legal standing here with the county. They do not have their own zoning. The zoning falls to us. If you want to have your own zoning, I encourage your township board to go down that road and set up your township government so you can have your own zoning. There are several questions asked, how we would like it if businesses were put across from our homes or where we live. And I think that's a very unfair statement. My family farm is a gravel pit across the street from it and we didn't really have any say or control in it and that's the way it is. And my home here in Wasso, in the historical district, has several businesses that surround it that aren't zoned. There are meth labs and drug houses. So it's very unfair for us, for you guys to say to us how we'd like if businesses show up. Well, businesses have shown up and we're all affected by this. And I know, I know it may seem unfair and as a county commissioner and sitting on the planning commission, we're trying to, you know, part of our job and it is to hear from the local citizens of all the different municipalities. But, you know, we are also, as county commissioners, looking at the future of the county from a very large perspective overview, looking down the road several decades in what is good for economic development, what is good for planning. And the fact is, we have, we have an interstate that goes from Canada to Mexico that runs diagonally through our county. And we have numerous state highways. And that's where the business is gonna be and that's where the growth is gonna be. And it's also unfair, because I don't think any of us up here on the board had said to anybody that you couldn't build a barn or you couldn't buy that piece of land or provide them or whatever. Most of us, we only served here one, two, maybe three terms. So, I just would like to share, share that information.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. Anyone else have anything at this time? I do feel, when these issues like this are coming from the board, Pete Preston should be present all through the meeting, so that we can bounce some questions off him. Because I would like to know if this went out with the planning without the residents knowing. Normally this is always, you know, sent to the residents, that, you know, you have something going up and attend the meetings and come and wish your concern with, in support or against. So I don't know if we dropped the ball there or if that happened, but that normally is the procedure that happens whenever these kind of type of things are coming. And I don't know that they're trying to put it through. And the comment about supporting the township, the problem I had with supporting the township is that the township wasn't looking out for its residents when they wanted to allow this business under a special use. So regardless of your home or where you live, they were gonna put this business here if they could have done it under a special use permit. So had that been granted, it would have been a yes from Bennington Township and they would have said yes. And you guys would have still had this business right next to your homes and right across the street from you. So, I mean, it's all just basically falls on a technicality. Had they been able to use the special use permit as a technicality, they would have put it there. That's my response to that, but I guess I have nothing further on it, if anyone else does. But I do also, while I do have the, Commissioner McMaster, I mean, a gentleman being denied several times. I don't think that was this board that denied.
No, I don't know if that, I mean, did you, did they even go to the planning commission?
The MSP? Yes, please. I went in front of Captain Ash, or Captain Ash, Mr. Ash. He told me, no, that's how Bennington Township was. He told me the best way to go from this route was to get ahold of Matt. So I went up to Matt's office, no, each time, three times. You know, I talked to Mark, I think it's Brennanback, the property owner, which was, you know, we were trying to hash out a price back and forth. And when we did, you know, I told him what was going on. He was, you gotta be kidding me. He's like, no, this is how Bennington Township was set up and that's how it was gonna be. I even stopped in and asked Cindy, what do I do, where do I go? You know, she says, I mean, she couldn't help me because the decision that she had, because she couldn't make any decisions, but she said you might want to go talk to Matt. So I went up there and I talked to him. And we sat down and I told him what I wanted to do, plain and simple. That was the only thing that pulled me back, you know, my fault for not purchasing the property at that time, but my hands are tied. As I go to, like I said, I bought the house. And then I bought the vacant land next to me. And then right after that is when I was going after that, that third parcel on the corner. That's when all this started coming about. And it's frustrating as heck, because you have laws. You have channels that you gotta go through. This is what I was told to do as I went through. I even stopped right up here to the county clerk's office or whatever area this is for the planning. And they sent the area back over here. It's how it was. So, understand my frustration, because that was no, that was not the idea or the plan when I bought that house. To look off to the south and see a 20-foot tall pole building that was gonna sit on somebody else's property, no disrespect, Jason, honestly, because I wanted to put a pole building at the backside of my property so I can store my fifth wheel, my boat, my trailers, my truck, so they're not out in the open. That's where I wanted pole storage. You're telling me no, they told me no, like you're telling him yes. It doesn't make any sense to me.
We're not telling him no. You probably should have tried to file for a, a trade, a variance, right? Isn't that how that would?
It stopped right there. He says, it wasn't going any further.
That's not how government works. That's an employee, you needed to, you needed to go to the board. You needed to apply. I know, I know the counties love people to put pole barns on, but you're not without houses.
But that all stopped, I think, five years ago, six years ago, maybe a little bit more, because if you go down 52, Mr. McMaster, and you look out to the left, three to four miles from my house, you'll see pole barns that were built before all the zoning stuff went in. And it's frustrating to me, not knowing, you know? It is what it is, but this is where I feel I'm being discriminated against, because I would have bought it. I still do, but I can't now. To do the same thing that he's doing, that's the whole point. And you're telling me no. You're telling everybody else out there, no. It doesn't matter if you come in here, this is the master plan, this is the way it's gonna go, this is the way to the future. That isn't what I bought into.
Well, again, we do gotta say that it's not us that said no to you several times.
It's not us. And there's a process for variances, there's a process to apply for variances.
We've got to.
Well, this is where I thought it was going to the right direction, because I was told by not just one person or two, but four people. And I'm not gonna sit here and drop names and get anybody into trouble, but it was just how the process was set up and it was how I was appointed. And it's frustrating. And you know, another thing too is you only hand out letters 300 foot away from the site that all this is going on. You don't tell neighbors. You don't print it up to the paper, you don't send out letters to anybody. You go 300 foot away from that property. This gentleman, first time I got to meet him, probably goes about a half mile, mile and a half or over. First time in my grave in 10 years, because he's very quiet to himself. And it's frustrating that you gotta meet somebody like that.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Well, thank you.
We'll move back into the agenda. Does anyone else have anything further?
I know that has been brought up at planning commissions and EBA meetings, about the potential expanding the range that.
Well, if it's only 300 feet, it might be expanded.
Well, that's ridiculous. All that's been reworked, the zoning ordinance and the master plan has been reworked. But that's been brought up before.
All right. Yeah, that needs to be addressed.
Because I mean, that's like a slow.
That needs to be addressed to the neighbors, all the neighbors in the surrounding area. No more 300 feet technicalities. They need to go over to their mom. Feel a little lethal. Anyone else have anything else? Go public, please.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
No.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulman?
No.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Oldshausen?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Next item, Commissioner.
Item two, item B, I'd like to move to approve the amendment of August 12, 2019, Economic and Physical Development Committee.
For the motion to support on the minutes, do we have any discussion or changes? All those that say aye?
Aye.
Close. Commissioner passes.
Chair, that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McMaster. Move to County Finance and Leadership, Mr. Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We move to approve the formal request of the State 911 Committee, SNC, for the return of $458,913.30 in the Morse Pension Fund that was over assessed in Chiwasi County, 911 Fund, in previous budget years to be paid as determined by the board.
Second, yeah.
Your motion and second. Discussion on this motion. Mr. McMaster?
There are three terms back when I was not on board, but I was commissioner and I started attending the 911 Central Dispatch Committee Board meetings. And all this came up with the issues with murders and everything and discussions of how this could happen and stuff. The question was asked to that former chair, Deb Doyle, about the finance committee, the sub-finance committee that Mr. Miller spoke about. And she could not tell us when last time that finance committee met. She could not tell us who sat on that finance committee. So clearly there was, there was a breakdown, not saying it's anyone's fault, but for a period, I believe. And not that that finance committee would have even picked up on this. This goes back, this goes back 20 years, but for a while that board was operating without internally their finance committee meeting. And then I have questions for Director Moreling about the radios. I don't know if that's appropriate now or if we've got someplace else on our agenda. But I know yesterday was on the agenda to talk about the surcharge, but I would just say more information somehow, somewhere, someone, sometime about the radio, potential radio purchase, what the plan is. It doesn't appear tonight, did you just send it to us or whatever?
I don't have numbers. Very simple, but yeah, I'm working on it. I'm meeting with Motorola on Monday, so.
Is this a police-only project?
No, I sent an email out, because I was trying to get an idea of numbers, the amount of radios that we're going to need. And I believe that our emergency manager, Kai Atkins, was reaching out to fire EMS, so I reached out to police. That's the numbers I have so far.
Well, where, what do you think, 3,000, 2,000, 4,000, 5,000?
4,500.
4,500?
Yeah, I bought, my board just bought six of them. We went into Genesee County, bought over 2,000 radios. And we were able to get them for about 38 to 100 to 4,000 because of such a hard purchase. I just did the math quickly, because I was like, rezoning, wait a minute, Angie. In Chiwasi County right now, I believe there's somewhere near 450 radios that all have to be replaced, because the ones we have now, I think they're 2,500, 3,500, that's the Motorola 3,500s are no longer supported by service as of December 31st. If you have that radio and it breaks down now, you throw it away. Motorola can't fix it, none of the other distributors can fix it, you just throw it away. We knew about this, but none of the municipalities could afford that high expenditure at one time. We were fortunate enough to be able to buy just six of them, but we need another 10 to 15, but.
So is this like a top share thing? Is that what probably it's gonna be? Like, are you gonna, 911 will pay for all of it, or the municipalities pay for some of it, or? Details to be determined?
That will have to be determined. Sometimes.
Well, I mean, it's obviously important, we know about that. We know about the software stuff. If we're having any discussion about, regarding the surcharge, the military and stuff, we need to handle that stuff, so if we could just work on that.
Okay, if I have any.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else on this motion at this time? Go public, please.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Paulman?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Oldshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
I move to authorize replacement of an existing main serien at a cost of seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars as part of the IT department's five-year rotation plan, and to complete the, the virtualization of some remaining standalone servers.
Support. The motion in support, discussion on this motion. Part of the five-year plan, we know what we're looking at. We have some old equipment that needs to be turned out. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
I move to approve up to six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for a movement replace the compressor and dryer core of one of the air conditioning units at the district curtain.
Support. Motion in support on this. Any discussion? See no one that bits came in? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
I move to approve up to ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is five thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars each, to remove and replace obsolete door drives on two elevators, the circuit core, and the capitan doors. With new IED door drives included, so it does include all engineering and material.
Support.
The motion in support, discussion on this motion. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number nineteen dash oh eight dash ten, pledging the county's full faith and credit to repayment of the county's share forty percent of the Mistigate Creek inter-county drain note, series two thousand and fifteen, on January first, two thousand and twenty, in the event that the pending bond issue is not completed by that date. And today we need two-thirds vote required.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion on this motion.
So there's what, five votes, that's what we need?
Yes. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holshausen?
No.
Commissioner McMaster?
No.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
And chairman?
Motion passes with two-thirds, yes, two-thirds.
I move to adopt resolution number nineteen dash oh eight dash eleven, pledging the county's full faith and credit for the wind due of the county's share, now thirty-six percent from forty percent of the principal and interest schedule of the proposed pending issue of Mistigate Creek inter-county drain bonds, series two thousand and nineteen, for improvements to Mistigate Creek inter-county drain. Four votes are required.
Second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this motion? All right, another roll call, please.
Commissioner McMaster?
No.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
No.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
I move to authorize five thousand in magic funds for a twenty-five thousand dollar Department of Environmental Quality grant fund to establish two permanent locations for conducting monthly electronic waste recycling events.
Motion, I have a support from Commissioner Webster. Any discussion? I think we've cleared it up now, understand it a little bit better, and all, roll call, please.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Root?
Yes.
I move to authorize the quarterly disbursement to Midstate Health Network in the amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents from Chiawasi County in accordance with Public Act two of nineteen eighty-six, Cobal Convention Facility, for liquid tax funds, and authorize the board chair to execute all necessary documents.
Support.
Motion in support, discussion on this.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
I move to authorize Commissioner Marks to attend the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, Kentucky, Michigan, and Ohio State Regional State Leadership Conference in Washington, DC, on October three, four, two thousand and nineteen. This is for travel expenses only. There is no charge for the conference.
Support. The motion in support, discussion on this motion. Roll call again.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
I, I, I apologize, I didn't mention it when I came. This is with regard to, uh, item number, uh, A, with the nine-one-one committee paying that. You notice the last phrase was added, to be paid as determined by the board. I would ask the board if they could directly pay it by September second, uh, which is the deadline for the state, and I believe it could be done on a voice call within the two. I, I didn't say.
Yes.
Okay, in, in regards to motion A, I would add that we would have a motion that we would pay, um, the funds back to nine-one-one by September second, two thousand and nineteen.
Support.
The motion in support, discussion on the motion. Uh, roll call on that, too.
This is a separate, this is not in addition to the A, correct?
No.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
No.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, J, I move to approve the minutes of the August twelfth, two thousand and nineteen Finance and Administration Committee.
Motion, support, Commissioner Webster. Any discussion on the minutes, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Plomin. Public safety courts did not meet, Commissioner Webster, do you have anything to add to today?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Health and Human Services, Commissioner Garber.
Thank you. Agenda item A, I would move that we authorize the Health Department to hire a registered environmental health sanitarium at salary grade nine, forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, to fifty-six thousand, five ninety-six, eighty. Starting forty-three thousand, five thirty-four, forty, through fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and eighty cents, to fill a vacancy.
Support. The motion in support, discussion on this. Normally when we say starting, though, we just say like the starting. We just saw the range, and now we've got a second range. No, we've been putting the starting ranges out there, because if you see the max salary, it's fifty-six, five ninety-six. We don't want anyone to go into that position making higher than somebody that's currently in that position. So, we try to go to what the highest range is, and we still give the department that opportunity if they want to raise them, but we don't want them, this person, to be newly elevated to start higher than that currently in the state. So that's usually why we've been seeing those now, kind of in accordance with our weight study, and then trying to make sure we keep things in line. Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Agenda item B, I would move that we authorize the Health Department to hire a nutrition program with coordinator, registered dietitian at salary grade nine, forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, to fifty-six thousand, five ninety-six, eighty, to fill vacancy.
We have a motion on the floor?
Support.
And a support from Commissioner Webster, she's getting most of them today. And this one does not have that salary range due to this only one person in the position. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin? Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Agenda item C, I would move that we appoint Joey Melty to the Chiawasi County Health Corps to fill a vacancy, effective immediately and expire in twelve, thirty-one, twenty-one, or until his successor is appointed and authorized the board chair or coordinator to execute necessary documents.
We have a motion.
Support.
Commissioner Webster will support it. Discussion on this motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes.
Agenda item D, I would move that we authorize MSU extension up to twenty thousand dollars for the cost of a build-out and moving expenses to be paid out of the MSU extension fund balance.
Support. We have a motion in support, discussion on this.
Okay, no, I have to say that's all the move, but. Move in three lines in your move.
What, uh, kind of timeframe again? What do you kind of plan on being in, Capitan Door?
We would like to be in the end of August or first September, depending on when we can get everything lined up. I'll assume that internet, we have internet access.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
Yes.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Agenda item E, approve the minutes of the August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen Health and Human Services Committee meeting.
Support. Motion in support, Commissioner Plomin, discussion on the committee meeting minutes, changes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say aye. That motion passes. We need a hold. Mr. Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we set a public hearing for Thursday, October tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at the regular board commissioner meeting at five PM to discuss the possible expansion of road commission board from three to five members.
We have a motion in support, Commissioner Webster, discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marks, we have three to five members. It does not say that in this motion, it just says two, five members. Am I to add three to five?
Please.
Just wanted to clarify.
From three. From three to five.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Plomin?
Yes.
Commissioner Webster?
Yes.
Commissioner Holshausen?
No.
Commissioner McMaster?
Yes.
Commissioner Garber?
Yes.
Chairman Root?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty nineteen, in the whole meeting.
I'll support that.
We have a motion in support, Commissioner Garber, discussion on the minutes, continue the whole meeting, this one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're clear. Thank you, Commissioner Marks.
At this point, chairperson, I think I've, we've had a long month. I don't have anything really to add today. We've had a really long week. We'll go right to our other agenda items. Any commissioner has anything to add?
Can I get, I'm sorry, I didn't mark down on, um, committee of the whole A, who's second with that.
Commissioner Garber. Oh, wait, A.
Yeah.
Now, let's, Commissioner Plomin. And Webster?
It was Webster.
You know, if all fails, just Webster. She's second to everything. If all fails, it's probably.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any other agenda items, Commissioner Holshausen's? Anything for today, Commissioner Plomin's?
No.
I think I said, uh.
Commissioner Webster, anything?
I could go leave it till later.
Commissioner McMaster?
Good.
Commissioner Marks? Commissioner Nerven? Anything? Okay, then we'll go back to our second round for the public address to board. We have no slips yet, but everyone can fill something out and turn it in if they, anyone would like to speak at this time. If not, go.
Just let me know if there's someone else who are going to fill out this list. I have four, I have two things. Can you speak?
Go.
Okay. Um, I wanted everyone to know that there is no November election, so we're pretty excited, excited about that as we're ramping up to the two thousand and twenty. Um, I also wanted everyone to know that the deadline for any kind of proposal language for the March primary, um, is December seventeenth at four PM. So I want to put that out there. Um, something that constituents have asked me, and I said I don't, this isn't Mike Chambers or anything, and they're having a hard time, more and more people are watching the minutes on the web, and so they're asking about microphones. And I thought we did have like microphones at one time, that they're having a hard time of hearing. So, um, I have, we have information provided to me from the city of Lasso for what they utilize for those that have, that may be present and have a hard time of hearing, but just wanted to mention that I'm getting those kind of calls. So, and then, lastly, um, this is not quite an argument or anything like that. It's just to kind of bring to your attention and us again have an understanding as elected officials, and have a respect for each other and our positions. I am then elected as the county clerk to hold up to the statutory duties. And you can imagine my dismay when I walk into a meeting today and I'm just learning of Tom Boyer's retirement announcement. Now, even though Mr. Boyer did not follow the proper process in doing so, you know, neither here nor there, he was to submit that in writing to either, you know, to myself, the probate judge, and to the prosecuting attorney. And given that I understand something transpired about ten AM this morning, I had no notice, I've had no email, and I'm just a little, um, beside myself as to why something like that would happen when I'm around that is responsible for something as big as this. So I have been preparing for making this announcement for once, so that we as a county don't get scrutinized for our processes. And it's a big deal when we have a reappointment of something, and so, um, I'm just asking that we take in mind for those I work very diligently when I get something to inform you guys right away. And so, I find that bothersome that I walk in and I'm told, not even shown initially, but I'm just putting that out there. You guys will all be on the emails, you will know about the meetings that take place and things like that. I'm asking for the same kind courtesy.
I absolutely agree with you. I sat there yesterday and said this is what would happen. And we'll be old here.
The idea is, he said his letter, and there's no more, there's no, we don't need to continue to dwell on Tom. He sent his letter in, the process, he gave it to Mike. He's been talking to Mike a lot, and he's been working with Mike, and he's gone through the channels of setting up what he wants to do for himself, regardless of whether we were going to censure, regardless of anything we said here. He was in that process to begin with. And I think the channel was that it came to us now, we did have a contentious meeting this week about this topic. We started off by letting everybody know. And I'm sure the letter would have been forwarded to you and your committee. So no one was, no one was left out of the process, I think it happened when it happened. And unless you felt you wanted to be in on that meeting, when he wanted to just meet with Mike, I mean.
Not necessarily.
He wanted to meet with Mike, and I, I don't know, I feel like if he, I feel like if he wanted to deliver you a hand personally, a letter, he, he would have.
Well, and he and I've had a conversation, and the law is pretty clear, so I'm not going to pick about that, because it has been submitted. It's just that when I've had information in the past, in my two and a half years, as you've experienced, I've shot you an email, please read, a text saying, please read your emails, I mean, I let, who needs to know the first important people? I love them. And given that this is a constitution committee, we are going to have to be, I plan on being very transparent, as well as the other two, but, you know, there's a process, and just.
Yeah, I think all the commissioners received the emails after.
And Caroline, I apologize, we're not sending you, uh, short. Uh, shortly after I did that, but I had one as well, I do apologize. I will add this to the prosecutor's.
I certainly didn't like the optics of the meeting. I wanted to do it in public, and it got done behind closed doors, and a censure is not calling for his retirement or resignation in any way, and all of a sudden here we are today. He's all of a sudden retired.
Do we have any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Thank you, sir, for the recognition. Concerning Tom then, will the physician go immediately to the Board of Elections? Or will there be an interim appointment?
It will go to Caroline and her committee with Judge Dignan and Prosecutor Daniel.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what their process will be after that.
It's totally up to them.
Okay.
I would assume an advertisement, seeking candidates interviewing.
Thank you, sir.
Can I explain the process real fast?
Uh, go for it.
We're just gonna, we're, first and foremost, we need, the three of us need to set a date that we can do an open meeting, and that will be published in the paper to the public. And then that meeting will consist of setting up two other meetings to take applications and resumes. So the first meeting is going to be setting up what transpires from there after.
What's the deadline?
We don't have a deadline.
There's no deadline to appoint vacant elected positions?
But, given.
Why is the commissioner's deadline thirty days, and the local electing is forty-five days?
There's no county law versus the Constitution.
What are you talking about? I'm a commonly elected official, and it takes thirty days.
There are different sections of Michigan law, that's why, one's in the Constitution, and one's in the.
So, so we can just leave the position vacant until the two thousand and twenty election?
Yes.
Yes.
If they still choose.
I can't foresee that happening.
If they still choose.
You can't reach it.
And sometimes it happens, sometimes that happens, if it goes unfilled. You have to have a majority of two out of three.
I am at a conference next week, so I will be reaching out to the other two members and trying to get something lined up, so when I get back, we're moving forward. And can I ask something on the public hearing? You did not state, um, where you want this pub, I was, it's, you can do this. Pardon?
To be determined, sir.
Where we want it.
Are we doing a determined meeting?
Finish what he was gonna say.
Hey, you sent the public hearing for Thursday, October tenth.
Right.
So, no.
Better, your better regular working.
What paper do you want that ever printed? One, both?
Both, simple. On our website, on our Facebook page. We've posted on your board. And we've all got, you know, a month to, to go around to our townships and let them know too that.
We send them notice as well.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm Alan Swanson, and I have a lot of comments about embellishments and dramatizations by this board, but I'd like to start out with the front page of today's Argus. And what happened last night was just a farce with this censure. You were blindsided by the whole thing. These people knew what the results of the meeting in the vault were going to be early in the day. They knew it. But yet they had to go through all this pony show. You sat there, Mr. Plomin.